Okay, then if you could throw the agenda up, Brian, please.
All right, can you see the agenda?
Yep, Commissioner Weaver, whenever you are ready.
I will call to order the April 26, 2021 WPC meeting. We will start with approval of agenda in the meeting minutes. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Commissioners, I do apologize. I'd like to request removal of item 6C. It was a placeholder originally, and the specific tax projects are actually listed further in the agenda.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjust the agenda as suggested?
This is Commissioner Shay. I'll make a motion to adjust the adjusted as we discussed.
And do we have a second?
Commissioner Penn will second that.
I will do rule. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Thanks. And Commissioner Pence.
Yes, I.
This passed. Let's move on to the meeting minutes. Do we have any suggested changes to the minutes from last month? Or a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Commissioner Verling, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
You have a second?
Commissioner Casilius will second the motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Thank you. All right, I'll do rule. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Pence.
Hi.
Fast. We have a public comment letter that I believe Vanessa is going to read through for us.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So just to remind the Commissioners, because we are currently, due to COVID and the closing of the building, all of our meetings are being held virtually. So our public comment process is to reach out to staff and submit in advance. And then after the meeting, staff will reach back out to the resident. Now, the resident is always invited and has been invited to listen in and to the meeting, or watch it, obviously, afterwards, as posted on our YouTube video. So at this time, I'm going to read to you a letter that was received by one of our residents, Maxine Hughes. Maxine is somebody we're familiar with, and she's a wonderful resident. And so I'm going to go ahead and read this for you on her behalf. "Good morning, County Board members. My name is Maxine Hughes. I live at 1259 Maxine Circle East Shakopee. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of water quality in our county lakes and inform you of the current wake boat issues. I am a Shakopee resident and business owner. I grew up on a farm with fields on the shores of O'Dowd Lake. Three years ago, my husband and I returned to live on the lake. Currently, I'm a member of the O'Dowd Chain of Lakes Association and serve as a lake monitor for both the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and the Met Council Environmental Services, the CLMP program and our camp program, measuring water quality and collecting water samples. I've observed many changes to the lake over the years. Where once farms surrounded by the lake, now large residential lots, a DNR boat launch, a city park with fishing pier, and Stone Brook Golf Course line the shores. Despite the development, O'Dowd is one of the cleanest lakes in Scott County. Last year, the lake was busier than ever. Due to the COVID restrictions, people flocked to lakes throughout the state. In addition, like other communities in Scott County, Shakopee is growing, and many residents are finding and enjoying O'Dowd's attractions: clean water, good fishing, and nature. The biggest challenge and the biggest change, sorry, last summer, was the presence of wake boats. These powerful boats move slower than conventional ski boats, churning water so boarders ride the waves without ropes, but also creating wake action that detracts from others' enjoyment. I observed kayaks, canoes, paddleboarders, and fishing boats, disturbed by the wakes the boats create. Waves generated by these boats even disturb large pontoon boats. Waves have flown over the pontoons on my boat and onto the deck. Last Fourth of July, sixteen pontoon boats were huddled in one corner of the lake after several wake boats took over the main body of the lake. These wake boats are too powerful for these shallow and fairly small lakes. O'Dowd is less than 300 acres and 22 feet at its deepest. People enjoy fishing these lakes, and the deep waves disturb the aquatic vegetation and lake bottoms. The public fishing pier located in the main body of the lake area is where the wake boats circle. I'm sure the noise and wave compromises the fishing experience. As a monitor, I observed a marked decrease in water clarity over the course of last season. I spotted fewer harrens and a loon that made its home on the lake for the past several years left the lake. Many studies confirm what I have seen and am reporting. They focus on the ecological impacts caused by the large waves created by these boats, including shore and bank erosion, decreased water clarity, water quality degradation, and harm to aquatic plant and animal species. Shallow waters experience the most direct impact of boat wakes. The University of Minnesota is currently studying the impacts of boat-generated wakes as part of the St. Anthony Falls Laboratory Healthy Waters Initiative. A University of Minnesota Aquatic Invasive Species Research Center study showed that the large volume of water holding ballast tanks of wake boats provided mussels and algae the greatest opportunity for interlake transport. These boats are not designed to fully drain all ballast tank water. Scott County invests resources and expertise to help landowners and public entities stabilize lake shores and improve water quality. Wake boats compromise the progress we have made in this area because they destroy shoreline, disrupt vegetation, decrease water clarity, and disturb recreational activities. Many of Scott County's 25 lakes are shallow. They are very vulnerable to this disruption. I ask you to give this issue careful study. I encourage you to support House Resolution 1606, Wake Surfing Regulated on M and Waters, and consider what steps our county can take towards solving the problem that wake boats create, maybe even considering banning wake boats in Scott County. Thank you so much for your time and attention, and thank you for the work that you do to keep our county safe and healthy. I have left my email address for you if you would like to contact me for more information or have questions.
You, Vanessa, and I understand that this was sent to the county board, but they directed it to us to take a look at, correct?
That is correct. It would be appropriate for that to be the process.
Um, are there any questions for the Commissioners?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Penn. The first question I have is I'm not familiar with House Resolution 1606, what the status of it is or what the content of it is. Does anybody on staff have any information on that?
I have read it, but I haven't stayed on top of it. Typically, with public comment, we would take it in, and then if the Commissioners chose, you could certainly direct staff to look into a specific issue and bring it back to you for consideration.
Commissioner Penn, follow-up question then. It seems to me that wake restrictions and size of motor restriction, et cetera, typically come from the DNR, unless I'm mistaken. So the first question I have then is, you know, this resolution, to see where this is at. Second of all, what the DNR's position is, you know, I don't know if we would have the authority to, in any way, you know, mandate that there's no wake boating on this particular lake. Staff's comments are appreciated.
Absolutely, Commissioner Penn. Those are both great comments. We can certainly look into what the DNR's current position is. I can bring more information to you back on what the county's capacity is to address boat, wake boats specifically. Counties do have authority to pass resolutions regarding wake in lakes, not necessarily specific vehicles, but, for example, we have lakes that have no wake restrictions or low wake restrictions. So counties do have that authority. However, a lot of that enforcement is still to the sheriff's office, and obviously, you probably need the DNR and similar agencies to kind of support or concur with that.
Oh, thanks. And the final comment that I'll make then is I would be very interested in getting more information on this, finding out, like I said, what this resolution is, the status of it is, et cetera. And then, after a little more research, putting it on an agenda in a future month, we could then potentially make a recommendation to recommend that we either support this House bill or talk to, you know, petition the DNR or potentially even at the county level, once we have more information.
Staff would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the Commissioners?
This is Commissioner Casilius, and I would agree with the Commissioner, I think it was Commissioner Penn, I believe. I live on Cedar Lake, and we have had similar issues over the past summer, and I anticipate we probably will again. And our lake is actually even more shallow than O'Dowd. So if we can learn more, I think that would be great. I also agree that I think enforcing rules like that are challenging, but I certainly think it's worth learning more about.
Certainly do that. One other recommendation I may make is we have any data that reflects the impacts of wave boats or wake boats on O'Dowd or our other lakes. So while we do monitor for many different parameters, that is not one that we have focused on. So if it is an issue that the Commissioners are curious or concerned about, I might suggest staff spend a little bit more time each year tracking that data because we don't have it. So we don't know whether or not wake boats will have a long-term impact on these lakes. One year of data doesn't really reflect an actual change in trends or lake health. So that might be one other direction you might consider going as well.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask and see if there was a way we could start looking at that. Do you have any ideas about that right now? I mean, can we track erosion or anything and actually attribute it to wake boats? Or is it, I'm not sure what you could attract, or excuse me, what you could track that you could necessarily say were from the wake boats versus other climate or things like that, so.
Well, we could definitely, you're right. Some of it is a little difficult. We're not going to necessarily go and tag every wake boat that's out there or every wave boat. However, if there's a market use increase in wave boat usage phase where there's a higher amount of wave boat action, we can do a little bit more additional water clarity monitoring or water quality monitoring for transparency, for example, that kind of thing. So I will turn that actually over to Melissa to look into and bring back to the Commissioners for potential options. But right now, we don't even have any trends for the lakes that indicate there's an impact. So even just general trends following our standard monitoring aren't reflecting it. So that would definitely be a good spot to start. Yeah.
Other questions or comments from the Commissioners?
Yeah, this Commissioner Penn, one follow-up then. So Melissa, if you're going to kind of spearhead this, I'm not discouraging you from trying to come up with any kind of measurements on specific O'Dowd, but perhaps maybe more beneficial would be, see if you can find any research that's been done on other lakes as to have they been able to prove wakeboard damage to certain lakes, et cetera. So if there's any other studies out there, we'd appreciate seeing that data.
Thank you, Commissioner Penn. I will do that.
Hey, Vanessa. Bruce Loney, Parley Spring Lake Watership District.
Yes, Mr. Loney, thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah. The City of Chanhassen just went through this issue on Lake Lotus in the City of Chanhassen. That might be a good resource to check in, and I believe what they ended up doing is lowering the lake level where it's a no-wake. So you might want to look into that, how they handle it. That was very contentious and a lot of public meetings on that, so just FYI.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, we look forward to hearing what you come up with. Next, staff reports. Looks like we have Troy up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioners. So I'll just briefly hit some highlights from the report, and then I will stand by for any questions following that. So we're currently with our Technical Assistance and Cost Share Program, have about 220 active cases. We're working with landowners on their conservation projects or issues. About three-quarters of the 220 is within the WMO. And we roughly have probably 170 or 120, 130 or so of that caseload actually are projects that are in various levels of planning or completion. So we continue to maintain a fairly heavy workload. It's been about this pointers, as you can see from the graph study, since last November. We're hovering around around the same numbers in terms of that workload. Our Soil Health Cover Crop Initiative, we continue to implement our five-year strategic plan. The latest initiative of that has been to really go out and promote the cover crops and the grant funding we have available. We have a number of grant funds that provide a source of funding to provide incentives for cover crop. And we, so we're really hitting that hard. We have a countywide mailer we did to all our ag producers. And then we're also going to do some one-on-one meetings or follow-ups with calls and just continue knocking on doors and promoting that practice. Clean Water Education Program, so we haven't met since February, but since then, we had our Squip partnership meeting that was earlier in February. And we're putting the final touches on our 2021 annual report, our work plan, and finishing up the 2020 report as well. We held our annual rain garden webinar. That was April 7. We've created a homeowner chloride pollution kit. That's part of the watershed-based implementation funding grant to promote chloride awareness and action. We're also doing something similar with bacteria. Those two go hand in hand in terms of the grant project that we're working on. So we're just a pet waste outreach as well. An inventory assessment, we're continuing to work on the Roberts Creek Subwatershed Assessment, where we are assessing using a model called PTM App, which is Prioritized Target and Measure. We use that model to identify areas throughout this Roberts Creek watershed where we have the potential install BMPs or practices. And we would eventually have a list of sites along with the practice type and pollution reduction estimates and cost benefits. It should be a fairly substantial-sized list, given the size of the watershed, but we anticipate having that done sometime mid-year. I'll skip over zoning and livestock, move on to water quality. In the Scott WMO, we're working on, we're doing water quality monitoring on two creeks this season. One is the Roberts Creek and the other is Pika. So we got the equipment set up, working with the watershed staff, and actually did our first round of monitoring recently on both of those water bodies. Buffalo, we have no activity. Any issues we had with respect to a couple of potential noncompliance are being resolved or have been resolved. So we continue as a good compliance with that program. You'll recall me announcing back in January, perhaps, that our tree program had got off to a gangbuster start, and honestly, it never stopped. So we're up to about 35,000 trees sold. We're just about sold off out of every tree at this point. And actually, this week, we're bundling all the orders, and Friday is our distribution day. So we'll be handing out about 35,000 trees, as I said, plus compost bins, rain barrels, and many, many orders of native seed mixes. After this week, then, we're going to open up our tree program website. We'll turn it over from selling trees to over to native plants, and we'll send, be selling native plant kits. Many of those are used for pollinator gardens and rain gardens. So that'll be next. Cooperative weedage management, we were awarded a 2021 grant from MDA. Typically, that grants 5,000, but due to program cuts and just more demand for the program, it was only 2,000 this year, but it'll help us continue our successful endeavor to control the spread of wild parsnip throughout the county, which we've had great success with so far. With that, Madam Chair, I'll just wind it up by going to the last page of the report, just showing you, those are all the cooperative payments we made for our cost share program. There was over $53,499 worth of payments issued for projects within the WMO and new applications. We have about a little over $16,000 in new applications. And again, this was from March and April. Seeing as we didn't meet in March, I compiled both months together in this report. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Did you try any questions from the Commissioners? All right, hearing none, we can move on to the Scott WMO update from Vanessa. You're on mute, Vanessa.
I haven't done that in a while. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a handful of updates that just are being covered by Melissa or Ryan during their program updates. So I'm going to start out with the move. As some of you might know, the staff in the Government Center East Building, so that's the original Government Center building, have moved out officially by the first week of April. It took a couple more weeks to get everything out. But we've now officially moved out of the old government building. We do have two temporary workstations in the new Government Center West Building up on the second floor. It is a lovely, lovely building. So if you ever have a chance to stop in once it's open, I definitely recommend it if you have a need. So we do have a couple of temporary workstations that we kind of are sharing for staff to help keep the costs down. Since so much of the work that we do is either field site or collaborative based as it is, there's not a strong need to necessarily be in the office. So we're going to continue to telework for the remainder of the year. The board has now moved to virtual meetings as well, primarily because, again, as part of the cleaning out and clearing out of the East Government Center Building for rehab, the boardroom is no longer available in order to be rehabbed. So all meetings are virtual for the, for at the moment. In addition to that, there is a bit of construction work going on as well in the parking areas. So for the month of May, obviously, unless staff really needed to be in the buildings, they really didn't even want staff coming in at all in May to make sure that our residents have every possible access to any parking options that we have. So that's a little bit of an extended piece for staff. As far as we have right now, it's still planned for kind of the end of the year in December for staff to move back into the new refurbished Government Center East Building. We will be up on the third floor instead of the first floor. And I'm sure there'll be pictures and such at the time, but that's kind of the move. So that means all of our files, all of our reports, everything is boxed and in temporary storage. We didn't see a huge need to access any of that this year. Much of it is electronic, but obviously, if there was something, we would probably have to postpone it. So other than that, staff's working remotely on that. One watershed, one plan. Had the opportunity to speak at Chair, Vice Chair, and then at a board workshop last week. And the board asked some very great questions. In the end, they were very supportive of our efforts with one watershed, one plan, and would like to move forward with that. They requested that we bring a resolution to the consent agenda in May, so we'll be doing that. The one interesting piece, I find it interesting, probably most people don't find it interesting. As you remember, Commissioner Weaver and Commissioner Pence specifically, the county can choose to have, they have two votes for the policy committee for one watershed, one plan, because there is a seat for the WMO and there is a seat for the county specifically. And both agencies do specifically have to pass a resolution as to what level of participation they're going to follow. A lot of times what we've done is we just simply have one person represent both agencies. For example, as staff, I'm the one staff representing both agencies, still get two votes. In this case, the board would like to see both of you there. Each of you gets to represent an agency. However, you can obviously be the backup for each other. If you like, you could do rock, paper, scissors as to which one you get to represent. You know, you can discuss it, too. We can discuss it, obviously, afterwards as well, and I'll meet with you to kind of review what those roles are. And so there'll be more to follow on that. Again, the application for that planning grant is in June, so I will let the WPC know where that goes, and hopefully, fingers crossed that we get it. It is a competitive grant, so if we don't get it, obviously, we can go, we can apply again, and we would obviously apply again, but fingers crossed that our team gets it. So a second update is the Unified Watershed Management collaboration that we are doing with the Parley Spring Lake Watershed District and the Soil and Water Conservation District. So that's the bigger effort to kind of look at how watershed management is occurring in the metro. You remember, we kind of talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, but that was, it was very new. We really didn't know much about it, and the boards really hadn't had a chance to really discuss the strategy, the goals. And so we're working through all of that right now. As of this point in time, there is no one path forward that anybody's agreed upon, for sure. Everything's open to how we might manage the different watersheds and how we might manage watershed in the county. Some key things are that we have kind of an official steering committee now, which are two members of the County/WMO Board, two members of the Parley Spring Lake Watershed District Board, and two members of the Soil and Water Conservation District Board that are kind of helping to kind of steer this and lead it, and then make decisions and bring them back to their boards. And then there's And then there's also a technical or project management team, which is made up of myself, Troy from the SWCD, Joni Geese from, she's administrator for Prior Lake Spring Lake Watershed District, so she replaced Diane. She's lovely. Not that Troy, you're not lovely. Troy, you're lovely. And then also Brad, they turned the camera back on, I like that. And then Brad from the county. So we're going to start reaching out to also a larger group of technical representatives. And we'll bring that information back. So as information gets disseminated from the steering committee, I'll be bringing that back to you here at the WPC to kind of digest and comment on. So that's kind of the, the update I'm going to give you right now. We're currently just kind of working on a broader plan and goal packet. And so once we have that completed, I'll bring that back to you probably at the next meeting. So in addition to that, I know we plan on doing a tack to kind of understand the impacts of our actual water resources and the scientific impacts of water resource management at the, at the actual resource level. But since we're also going to be having to do a minor plan amendment this year to update our CIP, because frankly, we've done so many CIPs, we need to add more to the list, which is good. I thought we would just tie that together so that we could just have one tack meeting and then cover multiple topics. And the tack members tend to be really supportive of that, because obviously these are professionals working for all of the different cities and townships. And we try to be really, really thoughtful of their time. So that's where that is. The next piece is just a very brief, as you guys know FEMA did update its maps. So we're working really hard on processing and answering a lot of those calls related to what happens to me now that my property appears to now be in the flood plain. So I've been walking a lot of residents through doing a LOMA or a LOMRF map amendment if they have that option. What, what's kind of available to them and helping them connect with FEMA. FEMA's been excellent, really responsive to residents. That's been their, their feedback. We're working really hard to help them also just kind of get their new maps. FEMA's got a great new map application that they didn't have previously, but that call volume is really high right now. So we're doing a lot of those. Um, one other piece is that we will be doing a Scott County Delivers presentation in July. That will be available to watch or you can, I can see if I can get a recording of that as well. And I'll bring you those dates as they come closer. And then finally, I'm also on a committee from Met Council and the Board of Water and Soil Resources to look at the more collaborative view of planning at the local level. I know it sounds like we're doing the same thing three times. There's a little difference between them. This one is very specifically looking at the plan requirements, like the comprehensive plans and the watershed management plans of municipalities and watersheds. And is there opportunities and where are the opportunities to kind of streamline that and eliminate any duplication and overlap? So I've been participating in that. This month, there's going to be a meeting to kind of release some of their final findings. So once they have some final findings, I'll bring that back to you to look at as well. So with that, I stand for any questions? Actually, I said, I'm not going to stand, but I said for any questions.
Any questions for Vanessa? Hearing none, I think we can move on to project updates from Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good evening. Just a few updates, which we have kind of discussed in the past, but just to get you up to speed at where we're at with things. So today, I actually met with our Public Works Department on site. If you remember, our Phase One Streambank Site had some erosion where one of the vertical locks snapped off. And today's visit was just to see if the Public Works Department could actually handle this maintenance activity. Access is a little bit tricky, getting what we're proposing is rock down there to kind of fill in this void on a structure. So we walked it today, kind of showed them a path that we could use and they did not see an issue with doing that. We are getting so close to the planting season that it, it just doesn't make sense to do the maintenance now. It would also cause some compaction for the renter that they won't be able to till the field before they plant it. So we're thinking fall at this point. And so I'll confirm that with the landowner and the renter to make sure, but that will likely happen, I would think in November, December timeframe once the crops come out. If you remember, that's the site where our access is through a crop field, so we kind of have that window of time when the crops are not in the field to kind of access it. So we'll continue to work together on that. We're also able to touch base on Quarry Creek, had a couple areas that we're still kind of looking at. It was an inlet pipe to our weir structure. We just want to make sure that that is clear of sediment. If not, we'll have to rent a piece of equipment that actually can push some of that sediment through it and, you know, at the other side. So we'll take a look at that in the spring, see how everything started to green up here as well. We did a little bit of the cleaning right in front of that weir structure in the fall. So just see how the seed, seed took. And then also, if you remember, there was a buffer that we had to replant due to some herbicide carryover that killed some trees and shrubs. So we've ordered our trees through the SWCD, those are arriving this week. So once they arrive, we'll pick them up and put them in the ground. So that'll be all done by this week, end of this week. We are also working with EPA and MPCA staff, or I guess MPCA staff on our EPA grant. And that one is coming to an end in August. And as we're approaching the end, we want to make sure, and MPCA wants us as well, to make sure we utilize all these funds. So right now I'm going through, just seeing if there's any slippage in various tasks that we have in the grant. I believe we do have some amount, probably in the neighborhood of five to ten thousand. So very little, considering the grant was over a half a million. But with that being said, we still want to get back to zero. So through a combination of updating our story maps, which would be staff time for the county, staff time for the SWCD as they have a number, the Scottish WCD, as they have a number of projects that are being closed out this spring. And then also, we did get word of a potential project in La Sure County where the landowner receives some equity funds. They're not getting a very good rate on it. It's a little bit lower. And so he was just kind of looking at other potential cost share sources. So I was working with the sewer SWCD staff today on that project. So we're still kind of exploring that one. If it can be constructed and certified complete before the end of the grant, there's some potential that will put some dollars towards that project and get one more in the ground here before the, the grant ends. So we will, we'll make sure to get that down to zero and at the, you know, desire of both us and MPCA. We recently reached out to some of the cities in the county and other entities like the Parks Department. We've got a grant through Bowser, Watershed Based Funding Grant. And one of the tasks in there was urban BMPs. And so that's why we're reaching out to the cities, because these practices need to relate to kind of mitigating some, you know, development stormwater features out there. And in trying to go above and beyond what standards have been set for some of these projects. So for instance, if a parking lot was required to infiltrate an inch of water, if the city or contractor, you know, whoever we'd be working with is willing to go to two inches, say, or, you know, a higher amount than they have to, then this funding opportunity was a potential for them to apply for. We did get, City of Shakopee came in with some pretty good project. It's actually really close to the courthouse and they're doing some street reconstruction and an apartment building that they're constructing. And then also the City of Savage was looking to reconstruct a infiltration basin that they had, which is basically flows directly into Credit River. Credit River is right on the other side of this pond. So they were both really good projects. There is also potentially one along Cedar Lake that we're looking at. And that, those two landowners were working with the SWCD on that. And then I know there's been some conversations too with the Cedar Lake Improvement District on potentially being involved in that as well. So we're working on that. We have to have them constructed and certified complete by this fall. The grant will end in December. So, you know, it doesn't give us a lot of time, but I think with all the different projects we have, we should utilize most, hopefully all of those funds. And so we'll keep, we'll continue to keep working on those. Last piece, so we started, or we're starting a map and verbit monitoring program this year. First year that we've kind of done this, so we just ordered all our supplies. They'll be arriving. Here in May, we should have everything. And then after that, kind of Vanessa and I will go out doing some monitoring. The Scottish WCD has graciously offered to allow us to tag along on if they do some monitoring on Pika Creek. And that's because I don't have much experience. So Vanessa's helping me kind of get up to speed with this. John Utech at the Scottish WCD is allowing me, if they do their monitoring, to tag along. Just kind of learn from him if they do that in August. And then also Melissa connected me with Met Council and they've got some monitoring that they do. And so they've also offered to allow me to tag along and that is also in August too. So hopefully I'll know a little bit more about what I'm doing in August. But it should be a kind of a fun program to, to start this year. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan? Okay, I lost my agenda. I had enough on another screen and one second please. Oh, thank you. I had it open on another screen, but, um, all right, looks like we'll go to program updates with Melissa.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Just a couple of quick updates. If you remember, at the February meeting, I mentioned that the DNR had announced their AIS Control Grant again. And it's a, it's a competitive grant and they were doing a, a random selection process. They didn't go into detail on how that random process worked, but I did get right on that. And I applied for all four lakes that we work on, so Cedar, McMahon, O'Dowd and Thole. And we were awarded the Control Grant for three of the lakes. So we were awarded for McMahon, O'Dowd and Thole. McMahon was two thousand four hundred seventy-five. O'Dowd was three thousand two hundred forty-seven. And Thole was two thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Now, why they didn't just throw in Cedar Lake also, I don't know. That would have been nice, but. And all of the grants would have been no more than five thousand dollars anyway. But so we've already got those contracts executed, so we're ready to go whenever I can start working on the pre-treatment surveys. We're not getting any holdup from, you know, the contract review process for those grants. Secondly, so for the last several years, when I would go out and do a aquatic plant survey, I would have to take paper forms and at every point, and I use a GPS and at every point, I'd have to write down all the data. Then I'd have to come back to the office or my desk and I'd have to re-enter in all this data into a spreadsheet to be able to, you know, look at the data and create maps and send it to the DNR and such. Well, finally, this year, ArcMap or ArcGIS has come out with a new tool. And so I've been working with our GIS department, who has put together now this application for me that I can use right on my smartphone. And it's, it's actually ArcGIS based. So when I'm out on the lake, my map shows up, I can turn on tracking. And I just go to every point and we throw the rake and I can enter in all the data right on my phone. And then when I come back to the office, I can look at that all immediately on GIS. So it's all, you know, uploaded and I can create maps almost instantaneously. So I'm really excited about that. New application, it's going to be really nice. Really create a lot more efficiency for my time and to get reports done on a quicker timeframe than what we have been dealing with. Typically, the DNR creates the report for each lake. They take the data, create the maps and then give us a draft report, but we don't get that until typically winter time. And, you know, it's been, we've been hoping that it was, you know, going to come out sooner, but they just don't have the staff to get it all done on time. So, so this should allow us to see the data, you know, a lot quicker and to make, you know, different plans hopefully on a more timely basis. So I'm hoping that to get out at least this week, Wednesday, it looks like a low wind day to start the first survey. It's either going to be on Thole or Cedar. I'm waiting to hear back from the DNR because actually on my calendar, the DNR wanted to do Cedar this week. So hopefully on Wednesday, I'll get out and build a trial, the application and see if there's any thing that needs to be corrected on it. But yeah, so I'm excited about that. Lastly, on April 5th, I attended virtually a meeting with the Cedar Lake Improvement District. It's been a while since we've been able to connect and kind of get together and, you know, see who's doing what. And so that was interesting. It was a very good meeting. I appreciated their time. They are, and I totally understand this, that they hired a contractor this year to do the pre-treatment survey and a pulse treatment survey on Cedar Lake because of the fact that we don't get that data until, you know, the end of the year. And we didn't even get the 2020 report yet from the DNR. So, so it'll be interesting to see what that contractor comes up with versus, you know, what our data shows as well. So it'll be kind of nice to have a comparison, just kind of the extra check. But the WMO does intend to continue these surveys on all four lakes. So, and hopefully with this new application, it'll make things a lot faster and have that data more readily available than having to wait till the end of the year. It was also interesting to hear from them that they are contracting with WSB to do a curb study. And it sounds like it's similar to what the WMO did in 2017, which is a population and biomass study. But also sounds like they're going to be looking for obstructions on the bottom of the lake. So for many years, the lid, the county started out trying to work with a commercial fisherman and then the lid kind of took it over. But we've had issues in the past trying to get a commercial fisherman on Cedar Lake because they've always said that they can't seen it because there's too many rocks or logs on the bottom of the lake and they don't want to damage their nets, which is understandable because those nets cost a lot of money. So hopefully this study that they're going to do with WSB, you know, if they can look for those obstructions and see where they are and maybe move them or, or confirm that there isn't anything to worry about, then maybe, maybe it'll work out to, a commercial fisherman can come and see in the lake more often. But it'll also be good to have a check, you know, on the last population study that we had done. Cause it was with a different consultant. We used curb solutions then. So, so it was good to touch base with them. And, you know, with the nine elements grant, there is a task in there that's, that's for cart management. That isn't in my work plan to start looking at until this fall, but we have four years to work on that. So we're thinking we can do something with, you know, the study that they're going to be doing and the cart management portion of that grant. And so we'll update you as, as things move forward with that. So that's all I have at the moment, so I'm open to any questions if anybody has any.
Okay, I think we can move on then to the annual. Okay, I think we can move on then to the annual report and lake summary.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So this year staff did work obviously very hard to complete our annual report and newsletter. As you recall, it's an annual requirement for the WMO that we must submit to Bowser to kind of reflect back and show progress on how we are achieving our goals and sorry, I just had it skip there. This is how we show progress towards achieving this RCIP and our work plan in our watershed management plan. So this is kind of the annual check that we submit to Bowser to kind of show how we are making that progress. So the annual report is due to Bowser every year at the end of April. Because of just kind of the way finances and things work with the county, we kind of have kind of a scramble at the end to get it done, but we're always very successful. And that is wonderful. So I am pleased to kind of bring this to you today. I'm just going to hit up kind of the three key points on the finance and the work plan. And then I'm going to turn it over to Melissa to kind of give you our annual lake summary, which is always kind of an everybody favorite. And then the rest of the report is there for you to kind of read and review. If you have any comments, you can certainly submit them today or any questions, you can submit them today. Or you can obviously send them to me via email or call me this week. I do intend to submit it though by the deadline on the 30th. So we only have a few more days. At the end though of today, for this meeting, we are as staff asking the Commissioners to recommend approval of the report in order to submit it to Bowser. So the first thing I'm just going to discuss really briefly is to kind of review 2020's overall financial summary. So for 2020, we get to use the words unprecedented a lot. I know we're all a little sick of them. Unheard of, all of the, all of the stuff that happened with COVID last year. It's not really easy to sum up in, you know, one short intro letter, but overall it was very interesting because the work that we do is very dependent upon an ecological system that is always changing. It's just kind of the nature of our work and we don't tend to always know what's coming and we don't always have a good clear path as to how to manage it moving forward. So I think we were really well situated to be able to handle something like a pandemic. We would hope we would never have to, but we did. Um, so we were actually able to continue on a vast majority of our services. Added to the fact that obviously a lot of our services, especially those contracted and done by the SWCD are done in the field with residents. So some of that outdoor work was certainly able to continue. We did kind of tighten our belts and make sure that we were able to postpone or table things that we could for a later date to hopefully kind of save some of our funding and finances. And we were very successful with that. So that being said, as far as revenue for last year, we did still take in our local water planning grant. Interest income was down about 50%. Property taxes came in about $5,000 short. PCA, the 319 grant came in about, well, quite a bit higher than was anticipated. But whenever we talk about our grant funding coming in, the year that it comes in fluctuates a little bit based upon reporting and when they disperse those pieces. So we always know the, the total dollar amount we're going to get in, but we're always kind of a little bit guessing from year to year exactly how much of that grant will get. So in this case, especially with the MPCA 2016 319 grant and the Sand Creek targeted grant, we took in significantly more revenue for 2020 than we had anticipated. There was a larger part of it that was anticipated to come in, in 2019 that, that we ended up just ending up coming in 2020. So it's still exactly what we were expecting to come into for the total of those grants. It's just what year it comes in is always a little bit of a guessing game. AIS funding again was $12,000 than expected. So the total revenue for 2020 was one, basically 1.7 million dollars. It's about 84,000 more than we budgeted. And overall, it kind of helped offset some of those shortcomings that we did not get in interest incomes. And we do tend to get a little bit of miscellaneous income, but this year, last year turned out pretty well. So as well as revenue, expenses last year, again, as I said, we tried to tighten our belts as much as we could. That being said, you know, we had an extremely high year for tax projects. We were very successful for a lot of the work that we had planned for the year. But by tightening our belts where we could, we were definitely able to come in far less than anticipated. So if you remember the 2020 budget, it was total expenses were anticipated closer to 1.6 million. We came in at about 1.3. So, um, overall, you know, it turns out to be about $468,000 difference. Administration, for example, we were able to save about $40,000. Land and water treatment came in just a little under budget, not much. Monitoring and data collection, we did tend to table a bit of that. Education and public outreach, obviously outdoor education days, you know, some of those things we weren't able to do. That was one of the ones. Regulation was pretty high. For those of you who've been paying attention, building and development was busy during the pandemic. So we'll remember that in future years. People don't stop building or developing. I know, just like everybody else, I looked outside at my yard and I was like, oh man, I could do that this year. I think people have time to just sit and look. Planning and coordination were obviously higher. So a lot of agencies and partners that, you know, were working on things like One Watershed, One Plan. We pushed those a little harder last year to kind of offset some of the projects that maybe they weren't able to put in the ground. So again, that being said, PCA grants came in, watershed-based funding grants came in and the Sand Creek targeted grant also came in. So it did help bump our fund budget, fund balance up to about just shy of $500,000, which is putting us much closer to that 30 to 35% range that we'd like to be in. Cause we've been sitting in the 20% range for the last few years, largely due to trying to invest as much as we could into meeting the match for the original Sand Creek grant. So we are where we should be. In fact, we're a little better off. We tightened it up as much as we could and it helped. So for 2021, you folks have already obviously seen that budget and approved that. So I'll let you look at that later. But again, just kind of a program by program assessment for 2020, as I said, we completed or we continued to do a lot of work in a lot of areas. Inventory and assessment, we are, we are working with the city of Prior Lake to complete that Pika Creek headwaters assessment. Prior Lake is actually heading that, which is great. Finishing the Cleary Lakes sub watershed assessment and beginning the Roberts Creek sub watershed assessment, as Troy mentioned, that was done. Complete sub watershed assessments for Thole and upstream. So that was one that was tabled. And then again, we did work to try to support the cities of Savage and Chaco B with their studies. For education, again, we definitely were very successful with the, with our SWEPP partners and many kudos to the SWCD for being able to pivot, another one of those great COVID words. And I'm getting a lot of webinars in place of in person and they were very heavily attended. It was, was wonderful. So that was still very successful, even while outdoor education days and our youth outreach kind of got waylaid. Um, we were still very successful at the success stories. And again, SWEPP does have an annual report for you guys to read as well. We just include a small summary in our annual report. So I always encourage you to read that. Again, something that was kind of a bit tabled last year was maintaining the Sand Creek story maps, but we're picking that up again this year. And obviously some of that social-based community marketing options. Land and water treatment, as again, it was one of the highest years we've seen again with the tax program. We moved forward again with the TMDLs for Cedar and McMahon. We were out there getting out there with working on our partnerships to get funding and we were all very successful with McMahon funding. And our Markley team is also working and being pretty successful with that. So monitoring, high kudos to Melissa for last year, one of the first agencies out on the water, getting boat inspections done before the DNR, before almost anybody else. So she worked really hard and considering how much traffic we had on our, our boat, on our lakes, it was very helpful. So we were lucky we were out there by like 4th of July weekend, right Melissa? If I remember correctly, yeah, that was a big date. So again, and a lot of that was because we already had operations plans in place. So the county had a really strong initiative from the beginning to come up with an operation plan as to how we implement the work that we do without significant loss of service during a pandemic. So because we had to create that plan from the get-go very early on in the pandemic, we were really ready to go and pull the trigger when we could start implementing these things. So we did end up helping a lot of other agencies that reached out to us to understand how are you doing your work? So in that, I will say we have a very, very excellent staff. So Ryan, Melissa, you guys get a lot. Lot of, while I can't pat you on the back, but I would if I could. For all that amazing hard work, Troy and all the staff at the SWCD, phenomenal work. Nobody stopped or slowed down. Everybody just dug in and kept moving. So our regulation again was very high. Review of updated local water plans, Melissa did a lot of that last year as well. But in addition, just the general regulation for permitting was very high. I kind of talked about again, how successful we were with the planning and the coordination. You page on the maintenance, Ryan, if you could please. And then again, Ryan's going to talk a little bit about this. One of the bigger pieces with maintenance again was the development of the BMP inspection app, which he'll be talking about later on. And one of the things that was tabled was an asset management program, which we might pick up again with the county if they decide to move forward with that. So this year, we've talked about many of the things that we do plan on doing this year, but just a quick reminder, we're going to continue that partnership with Prior Lake on the Pika Creek headwaters study. So for the city of Prior Lake, they want to get ahead of development and kind of start identifying the best way to manage stormwater runoff. So it's not an issue there. And so they can kind of help direct and guide development rather than have to just react to it. So it's a really beneficial study to all the partners. I've talked about a couple of those other things. SWEPP obviously is going to go raring forward again this year. We were able to get again a watershed-based implementation funding grant to help bolster SWEPP. And if it would also help support some of those more technical outreach opportunities and reaching more of our residents that way too and enhancements. Land and water treatment, we have a couple of really big grants. Ryan has been a rock star in getting those grants implemented and working with Board of Water and Soil Resources, really getting those contracts going and just, it's a lot of paperwork, a lot of back and forth, a lot of emails back and forth. So we'll continue again to work on our partnership activities with McMahon. As Melissa has mentioned, we do expect to hear from the DNR in about June. Hopefully with that grant agreement so that we can really jump into McMahon. And then monitoring, you know, Ryan's kind of talked about that. And again, our macro and verbit monitoring program, we're going to launch this year. For my perspective, material monitoring and macro and verbit monitoring are two other key tools to have. Water quality monitoring is great for giving you a point of, of data for how a water body is doing, but macro and verbit monitoring gives you a better idea of how healthy a water body is over a larger period of time. And it can also be used for identifying whether or not a water body is meeting its designated use. So you have to have the program and you got to have the monitoring to back that up though. So again, we've talked a lot about the planning, coordinating activities. So I'm just going to, you know, glaze over those as I've already kind of provided you updated with those. But again, we're going to continue those maintenance efforts as needed. Brian will be talking with you really quick here regarding a BMP inspection application. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Melissa so she can talk to you about what we all actually came for, which is how are our lakes doing? And then we are here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, can you just bring it? Yeah, I just wanted to show that. So I just wanted to remind all of you, so this box here at the top. So Scott County falls within the ECO region of the North Central hardwood forest. So there's several different ECO regions and water quality standards are created for each different ECO region. And so I like to keep this box included at the top as a reminder of what those standards are. So for total phosphorus in shallow lakes, the water quality standard is 60 micrograms per liter or 60 parts per billion. So any, if it falls under that, then it's meeting water quality standards. If it's measuring above that, then it's not meeting that water quality standard. Chlorophyll A is 20 parts per billion and then transparency or the succidus reading should be greater than one meter. So if you can scroll up just a little bit so we can see both charts, thank you. So for Cedar Lake, you know, we've got quite a bit of data now on Cedar Lake from 2006 to 2020 on this chart. And I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I've seen here. So the purple line is total phosphorus, the green line is chlorophyll A. And the lighter blue color is clear water. So that's where light can, light can shine through. But when we hit this darker blue area, that's where that's more murky water where light, light is not being able to penetrate through the water column anymore. And that's kind of where that succi disc, you can't see anymore is at that point. So what's interesting is that if you look at Cedar, so the succidus transparency is pretty low. It's about 0.7 meters. So it's less than that one meter. And when we look down at McMahon for 2020, you can see that the clarity decreased in 2020 as well. So it, so it kind of stayed about the same in 2019 and 2020 on Cedar, but it was, wasn't good. And in 2020, the clarity decreased in McMahon also. And what's interesting for both of those lakes is that total phosphorus kind of stayed the same. But chlorophyll A was reduced. So I just found that interesting that both of those lakes kind of had the same measurement reaction in 2020. So if we scroll down one more page and look at O'Dowd and Thole as a comparison, what I, what, what you can notice that's interesting is looking at 2019 to 2020 on the O'Dowd chart is clarity did decrease a little bit. So the transparency was decreased on O'Dowd. And also on Thole, on the bottom, that darker blue area, transparency decreased as well. My thought on that overall is that there was so much more boat action on the lakes, that there was a lot more stirring up of the water and that probably decreased clarity some on all four lakes. But what's interesting on O'Dowd and Thole is that total phosphorus went up. And it went up on Thole also, but not so much on O'Dowd, but, but Thole is a lot shallower than, than the other lakes. Especially in the bays and the, in the kind of more open area, it's probably about the same as I would say most areas in Cedar, but so I just found that interesting that the clarity on all four lakes pretty much decreased. But Cedar McMahon kind of had the same reaction with total phosphorus and chlorophyll A. And then O'Dowd and Thole kind of increased. Now, O'Dowd has that, that southern bay that's really shallow also. So if there's a lot of boat action down there, that really gets churned up as well. But these readings are taken from, typically from But these readings are taken from typically from the deepest part of the lake. So, with O'Dowd, I mean, it's still for the most part, meeting water quality standards. I should add a line on here as to where that water quality standard is, but it's kind of hard with showing, um, all three parameters on here. But, so I don't really see, just looking at this chart, I don't really see evidence that this year was a huge change in water quality for O'Dowd. Um, especially since, you know, chlorophyll A hasn't really increased, but, um, I definitely think that there was a trend on all four lakes with clarity decreasing and that could be due to the additional boat activity. That we saw across the state. So, I guess at this point, I'll just see if anybody has any questions on any one of the lakes. I will also say, I do have to add that the 2020 data is missing two months of water quality samples. So, um, because of, um, everything last year and we're trying to figure out how to operate safely. Met council, I typically get supplies from them every year to restock the kits for all of our camp volunteers. And I wasn't able to get those supplies from that council until June. So I didn't drop off the kits until June and they typically start sampling all the lakes in April. So we're missing two months that should be worked into that average. So maybe if we had April and May, that some of these results might look a little different because we'd have a different average, but, yeah, it's hard to say. So. So anyone have any questions at this point on the lakes?
So this is Commissioner Pent. Uh, after, uh, careful reviewing the annual report and lake summary. Uh, I'd like the planning commission to recommend to the WMO the approval of the report as published.
Um, do we have, did you guys have anything else that you wanted to go over with the report? Well, that was it. Okay. Thank you for your, um, motion, Commissioner Pent. Do we have a second to approve the report as presented?
Commissioner, I'll, I'll second.
Thank you. I will do a roll. Commissioner Weaver.
Hi.
Commissioner Thill.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, and, and Madam Chair, I, I realize that you do need to leave here soon. So if you need to transfer, um, the meeting over to, uh, Commissioner Pitt, you could do so at this time if that would be what you would like to do.
Thank you. Yes, I was going to mention that, that I do have to jump off. So, and I apologize. Um, so if Commissioner Pent, if you'd be willing to take over for me, um, I would appreciate it.
I'd be happy to do that for you, Rita. Take care. All right. So moving on to the next item in the agenda, it looks like it's the, uh, watercraft inspection contract with MBE. Who on staff wants to address that?
Thank you, Commissioner Pent. Um, so for the past two years, we've experimented with hiring a vendor to do watercraft inspections for us on Cedar McMahon, O'Dowd and Thole. And we've been very pleased with them. Um, they came highly recommended. Their, their name is Waterfront Restorations. But we've decided that it would be a lot easier to do a multi-year contract. So because a multi-year contract was going to be a lot more money, I decided I needed to go out for a request for proposals. So there's really only two companies that state that this is one of their main services. So I sent a RFP to Waterguards and to Waterfront Restorations. In that request for proposals, there's very specific things that we asked for and, um, I did get a call from both companies and they asked a couple of questions and I did, um, remind them. I said, please make sure you read everything carefully and put everything in your proposal that it asked for in the RFP. So they submitted proposals on time. When I reviewed them, um, one company was missing three things that I asked for in the RFP in their proposal. So with Waterguards, their, um, the cost in the proposal was to charge $22 an hour over the three-year period. For inspections and waterfront was $23.94, so a dollar 94 more per hour. But Waterguards did not completely fulfill everything that we asked for and waterfront did. So even though waterfront was a little bit more expensive, um, they were more responsive. They actually include things that Waterguard does not, that Waterguard would charge additional for. So after review, staff would recommend that we go with waterfront restorations again. And I just, I can go over some, what some of the differences are. Um, so Waterguards would charge us extra for the DNR training of their inspectors. Whereas waterfront includes that in the cost. Um, Waterguards won't do it. I mean, they'll do an end of year report, but it's only like a one or two page report. Whereas waterfront gives us basically anything that we want. We can ask them for all different kinds of parameters and charts and graphs and they will create it for us. So we get a much more robust report from them. Um, I did check one of the references from Waterguards and their inspectors were not able to ID certain plants that were found on watercraft. Whereas waterfront does do extra training for their inspectors for that. So they are able to identify, um, AIS. Waterguards would charge extra for to do a presentation, um, to say this group if we wanted them to. Whereas waterfront just includes that in their price and, um, and also waterfront again gives additional training beyond the DNR training, um, to their inspectors. And they also would give me access to their online tracking system for their inspectors. So that there, it's a GPS online tracking system. So I can get a login to see where they are. If I wanted to check in on them or whatever, but they check in on them for us also. So, so this would be a three-year contract this year, 2022 and 2023. For up to 1,400 hours of inspection hours on five different accesses. So two on Cedar, McMahon, O'Dowd and Thole. And the contract maximum would not exceed $100,548. So staff recommends that because of the extra, um, things that we get with waterfront restorations, that we would, ask for a recommendation to go with waterfront for the three-year contract. And I do have a draft contract uploaded to the contract site, um, that's waiting for review. And so this will also be going to the county board next month as well for approval. So. With that, I'll stand for it. Oh, I just wanted to do one more thing is that actually last year, I think Prior Lake, Spring Lake, Warner District actually had their inspectors out earlier than we did because, because they went with Waterguards and, um, I think they were out a lot earlier, like in May.
I just remembered that too. I think you said it. So I was thinking about it. Oh, that's right. They did get a, they did definitely a little bit before. But we were really high up there in, in the statement, so.
So with that, I'll send for any questions or a recommendation for, um, approval to move forward with waterfront restorations.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa, for the good presentation. Uh, any Commissioners have any questions or follow up for Melissa? Um, if we don't hear of any, then we'd be open to entertain a motion to recommend the three-year contract for the waterfront restoration.
Commissioner Shay.
Okay. Yeah. No, this Commissioner Shay. Yeah, I would make a motion to recommend the, uh, to, to approve the three-year, watercraft inspection agreement or contract agreement with, uh, waterfront restoration. Thank you, Commissioner Shay. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll second it.
There's been a motion, uh, been, and seconded to recommend to the board, the three-year contract with waterfront restoration. Uh, we can have a roll call, please.
Absolutely, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Thill.
Hi.
Commissioner Shay.
Hi.
Commissioner Verling.
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius.
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
And Commissioner Pitt.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, Ryan, looks like you're next on the agenda with the tax free project update.
So, Mr. Chair, uh, this was the item that we removed off of the agenda. Uh, what it was, was a duplication or a placeholder spot for the tax projects that are, um, the last and second to last items.
Okay. So we move on to the next item then, that the BMP, uh, inspection application contract?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. So, um, as Vanessa was discussing during the annual report, we have set up a contract with, uh, Wink, who was recently just acquired by Stantec. Um, so they're just two consulting firms that, that join together. Um, and this program is intended to track our status review of inspections on our capital improvement projects. Um, it, it could track other projects as well, but we've essentially set it up just for the, all the CIPs that, um, we've been more recently constructing. So this application, um, would be a GIS based application. So, um, using our current ArcMap, uh, license and setting up that application there. And, and there's a number of different things that we have as GIS products, um, like our story maps, that's a GIS application as well. Um, and so we've been having some meetings with Wink along the way. We just did our kickoff meeting, um, last week. And so we hope to actually have this product done by, uh, July-ish timeframe. Um, and what it will do is we'll enter in all our current CIPs that we have. You know, they'll go into this database and we can, uh, pull up this application when we're in the office on the computer. Um, look up any past inspections. So let's say you were planning on going out to the field. Uh, on a certain day, you can go back and look to see what was the status of this project at the last inspection. Was there an area of concern? Um, did it have some work done on it or was it looking good? Uh, so it would be beneficial for the inspector to kind of know that information. Um, everything's being housed in one spot. So currently our system is, uh, we had, uh, some files electronically on our, um, database, uh, scoop. And then also there are hard copy files in the project folder. So they're all in different spots. Um, this is a way to house them all together. So we're setting it up to have kind of two inspections, just a routine inspection. And then if we have some maintenance to, um, each time we go out there to kind of log what, what it is, is, is it changing? Um, and eventually, um, you're doing, completing the maintenance and then kind of having those maintenance records sort of in the background. Um, as, as we, um, you know, correct things that way, you know, we can kind of see where, where things are at. And not kind of bog it down by just a lot of different forms or inspection notes on there. So that's kind of the, the gist of the program. And another really neat feature that we decided to add is this program has the ability to, once you're out in the field, you would have like a mobile application, like a tablet or your phone. And so an inspector that's not familiar with the site, let's say first time ever being out there. They might not necessarily know where they're at on the site. And so we can actually upload our design plans, have them spatially referenced in the application. And what that means is we'd have sort of like a dot that represents us, you know, the inspector that's out there. And as you walk around the site, that dot will move as well and you'll see it. So if it's, you know, we're looking at a, a weirder structure or a pipe, we should be able to tell then on the actual design set plan, this is the exact pipe we're looking at. This is the structure or where on that structure are you currently standing? So if you wanted to note, you know, it's this portion of it, or, you know, it's not the whole project that needs anything maintained. It could just be one area of it. Uh, we'd be able to very specifically note that. And we can take photos that also get spatially referenced in there either. So you know what, what angle you took a photo from or where were you standing when you took that photo? Um, and, and this should be beneficial for, one internally, that we have this new record-based, uh, system that we can easily pull records from. You know, a lot of these projects are funded through grants. And so if anybody wanted to ask for those inspection records and take a peek at them, if they help on the project, we can easily do that. Um, also like we're currently experiencing, you know, some of these projects need maintenance to them. This is a good way where we could potentially take photographs, uh, maybe save a trip out there, you know, for, uh, actually going out to look at it. You know, we might be able to, with enough of this data, just send an email with photos and, you know, show them where on a design plan the work needs to be done. And maybe it saves time in that regard. Or if we're going outside of the county to do any work, you know, typically we try to use the public works department first if they can handle it. And then if, if not, um, then we look at a consultant. And then once again, this would be an easy way to kind of get them all the, the nuts and bolts of what exactly needs to be done out there. And so we, we're very excited about it. Um, and, you know, I guess at that point I'll kind of stay in for any questions if anybody has any.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Ryan. Um, Commissioners, questions for Ryan? As we're waiting for that, Ryan, I just have a couple of quick questions. One is, um, there is budget money for this. Um, you, you don't mention anything about that. And second of all, then, uh, is this primarily a tool to give you more efficiency? Uh, so time-saving or, uh, give you a more, uh, higher quality of service?
Sure. Uh, really good question. So first one, yes, we do have this budgeted. Um, it's in our maintenance, uh, portion for the 2021 budget. So we have kind of planned accordingly to have the funds available for it this year. And the second part, I would say it's probably both, um, efficiency, it will certainly save, um, time. You know, Melissa's kind of describing her GIS application she's working on and how that kind of saves time. Um, you know, now it's, it's kind of logging the information out of the field, writing it down on paper, bringing it back, logging it. Whereas this, you can easily, we're going to set it up where it's mostly just dropdowns. And then there will be a note section because every site visit's going to be different. But we should be able to log it in real time when we're on site. Don't have to come back to upload anything or, or do anything else. It, it should all be, um, in there. So it'll definitely save time, um, in that manner. And I think the way that it's set up where these templates can be produced, um, it would be a, a very easy way to show, you know, the pictures and the captions associated with the, the report itself. So it's going to auto generate those for us. Um, so I, I think also the, the quality of the product is going to be much better as well.
Thank you, Ryan. It helps. Um, any other questions by Commissioners? If not, we'd be open to entertain a motion to recommend the approval.
This is Commissioner Casilius. I'll, uh, make a motion to approve the status review tracking program.
Commissioner Casilius, uh, made the motion to recommend the, to the board, the approval of this. Is there a second to this motion?
This is Commissioner Thill. I'll approve. I'll make the second.
Thank you, Commissioner Thill. There's been a motion and a second. Uh, may we take a roll call vote?
Absolutely. Commissioner Thill?
Hi.
Commissioner Shea?
Hi.
Commissioner Verling?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
And Commissioner Pitt?
Hi.
And I'd add that we can bring this to the Commissioners and kind of walk you through it once it's up and running. They're fun to look at, so.
That'd be appreciated. Great, thank you. Yeah. Ryan, looks like we have the Sean O'Malley Streambank Stabilization Amendment on the agenda next.
Sheriff Commissioners, yes. So this name may ring a bell. We had reviewed this particular project late in 2020. So the reason why it is back here today is, at that time, we did not have very much funds as 2020 was coming to an end. If you remember, we were running very low on our cost share dollars. And we had one particular grant that this project was eligible for, but all we had was $1,813. And so that's what it was approved at. It represented, I believe, 18% of what the original cost estimate was, so very low. Landowners are eligible for 50% on streambank projects. And so this landowner at that time, with only those available funds, did take that, and it was approved at that point. Due to this project being on Credit River, it's a DNR-protected water, there was language in the permit that was needed for the project that stipulated when it could be constructed. So originally, it was going to be constructed in the winter. However, the DNR requires these type of projects to be constructed in the summer. So this particular landowner has reached out and was exploring the idea of amending their current contract now that we do have additional dollars for 2021 to bring cost share up to what they would be eligible for. But because of our limited funding last year, they just didn't have the opportunity to receive the full amount that they were eligible for. So this would be an increase to the contract, an increase of $3,202 to bring it to a total of $5,015, which represents half of the project cost. And we do have the funds to cover this in our local general fund for 2021. We've got, you know, a decent amount of cost share with our grants that have kind of become available here more recently. The reason why it is back here is that all streambank stabilizations are a WPC route application. And so they go to the SWCD first for a recommendation, which they did approve at their April 20th board meeting. And then the next stop would be the WPC for a recommendation. One thing to note, maybe you did notice this, there is a slight typo on the actual amendment itself. The technical representative has cleaned that up. They got the landowner to sign it. So, and I just received it today, with it being such a minor thing, I didn't add it. But so this does say $3,202 on the amendment that will be potentially signed if this is approved. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Any Commissioners that have any questions for Ryan on this project? Hearing no questions, then we would be open to a motion to recommend to the WMO board the approval of this application.
This Commissioner Shea, I'll make a motion to approve the additional $3,202 amendment to the application.
There's been a motion to recommend it. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Thill. I'll second that.
There's been a motion, and it's been seconded to recommend the approval. Maybe we have a roll call vote.
Absolutely. Commissioner Thill?
Hi.
Commissioner Shea?
Hi.
Commissioner Verling?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
And Commissioner Pitt?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Finally, moving to the last item on the agenda, it's the Joe and Marge Larson Shoreline Protection Application. Ryan?
Sheriff Commissioners, so here we've got another application for your review. As the chair just stated, this is for Joe and Marge Larson. They are on Cedar Lake. And what ended up happening with this project is there was a large willow tree on the shoreline that did come down. And what it's doing is it's kind of undermining the shoreline at the Larson site, and it is experiencing erosion. And without the protection of that will there, too, it is now experiencing some wave action where it's kind of having that continuous erosion that's occurring. And so the project is proposing to remove that willow tree, regrading the bank, installing a clear log to stabilize the tow, and then having kind of an upland buffer to it as well. So in the end, this project would protect 30 feet along Cedar Lake from nutrients and sediments from entering the lake. The estimated cost of the project is $3,990, and the proposed amount from the WMO is $2,793. And then the landowners themselves would be kicking in the rest, which is $1,197. This project would come out of the 2021 Local General Fund, although we do have sufficient funds for the project. And this project is, the particular practice requires a screening committee recommendation. So the SWCD did review this at their April 20th board meeting and recommended approval, and it is here today for the WPC's action on it.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions for Ryan on this project?
This is Commissioner Casilius. I do have one kind of dotted line, maybe connection to this, and that is on the north end of Cedar Lake. Sort of like on the north end, so if I'm standing looking at the lake, it would be to the west side. There was a really large willow tree that went down over the winter, and it looks like it was rotted in the middle, but a huge tree fell over. It split in half, and it's still blooming, but that just have to remain in the lake? I don't even know if it's actually technically on anybody's property. It's kind of near to where the water outlet is. But I'm just curious if this wouldn't, unfortunately, maybe turn into a similar situation.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Casilius, so I am not aware of any entity that would be required to remove it. I guess whoever's property, or if it's in a right-of-way potentially, they could. We've got language in our ordinance that if it's a diseased or dead tree, I don't know, I'd have to check on whether if it's, you know, if it looks like it's going to be imminent, you know, that it eventually would die, if that would qualify or not for that. There is some protection on cutting live trees within the shoreline area. It's not surprising that the willows hanging on, even though it might be only half there.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I don't think this one's going to bounce back anytime soon, but potentially, at least for this season, it's still, you know, it's still turning green. But now it just creates kind of a big obstruction in the lake, but I just was curious.
Yeah. Yeah, unless maybe Vanessa or Melissa has any other information, I'm not aware that it would be required to be removed, but certainly the owner could explore that opportunity.
Yeah, Commissioner Casilius, that's a great question. I'm going to let Melissa jump in here. I know some things, but I think she's got a good answer.
I don't think there's any requirement to remove it, but if it does cause a safety issue, the Water Patrol, the Sheriff's Water Patrol might have some funds to be able to do something about it, otherwise they would mark it. But I don't know of any case where the DNR has actually removed it from the lake, unless Vanessa, you know.
No, you're both right. Unless it's causing an actual obstruction to the outlet, you know, causing flooding to that extent, or it has to be a significant obstruction to, like, boat safety or traffic. And as Melissa said, they tend to opt to market versus anything else. Again, it's a great question. DNR tends to see it as an opportunity for habitat in that kind of emergent zone. So still, that being said, private property owners do have the opportunity to do other things. Like if you want to be able to do what these folks want to do, you can do that. So if the private property owner, and you probably have a little bit better grasp of who the owner might be, wanted to, they can certainly reach out to us.
Okay, okay, yeah, good. Thank you for letting me kind of, you know, have a sidebar, but that was helpful.
That's great. Good question.
We're looking for a Commissioner to recommend to the Board the approval of this project.
This is Commissioner Verling. I'll make a motion to approve the Larson Shoreline Protection Application.
There's been a motion to recommend the approval. Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Thill. I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Thill?
Hi.
Commissioner Shea?
Hi.
Commissioner Verling?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius? Commissioner Casilius?
Hi, sorry, wrong button.
It's okay. Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
And Commissioner Pitt?
Hi.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments at this point, done with the agenda? If I don't hear anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn to me.
And the Chair will second that, so we can have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Thill?
Hi.
Commissioner Shea?
Hi.
Commissioner Verling?
Hi.
Commissioner Casilius?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
And Commissioner Pitt?
Hi.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Have a great night, guys. And then, Ryan, you can stop recording at your convenience.
So I'm clicking the stop button, and it is not stopping. Try the Alt-C button. See that? Nope, still.
How about we do this?